I'd like to call a regular board meeting of ISD 701, school board to order February 8th, 2023 at 4:30 PM Central Standard Time. I'd like to welcome everybody here. That's item number one. Item two, we'll... Do you stand for the pledge of allegiance if you will? Or wish?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we move good forward, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Aho.
Support. Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Item five.
Did we first the agenda?
No, I just, yeah. Go back to item three. I just wanted to make sure everybody was paying attention.
Yeah.
Is there motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Now, will be called item five, public comment. There is none. Item six, personnel. We'll let Sir Alex take it.
Mr. Chair?
You're welcome.
Item A is a motion to approve hiring of Alice Woodhouse-Woodhousky as the temporary head wrestling coach effective January 11, 2023 for the remaining of the 2022-23 season.
Aho.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B is a motion to approve the hiring of Freda Kohlstedt as a 1.0 FTE special education teacher district-wide effective February 13, 2023.
Aho.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve the hiring of Sidney Foster to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Lincoln Elementary effective February 13, 2023.
Aho.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the hiring of Michelle Sedestrom as a 4B long-term substitute teacher at Lincoln Elementary from approximately March 10, 2023 through June 1, 2023.
Aho.
Support.
Moved by Director Iggen, supported by Director Dubarty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item E is a motion to approve the hiring of Matthew J. Anderson as varsity head football coach effective August 14, 2023.
Aho.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried.
Same.
Let Director show that you want that standing.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Item F is a motion to accept the resignation of Josh McDowell as junior high softball coach effective January 24, 2024.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item G is a motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer Benedict as a junior high girls swimming coach effective February 1, 2023.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Dubarty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item H is a motion to accept the resignation of Noel Cordero, school readiness teacher, Washington Early Learning Center effective June 2, 2023.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Iggen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item I is a motion to accept the resignation of Jeffrey Neist as the head girls soccer coach effective June 2, 2023.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion?
I guess I'd like to ask since we have Mr. Turner here, do we have any applications or are we looking for replacements for these positions?
We haven't put anything else yet, so we'll post those after tonight for soccer. And swim, I think they're going to hire with them. We'll look. There's some volunteers that we're looking at that would take that position. But girls soccer will be interesting.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item J is a motion to accept the resignation of Jeffrey Neist as a science teacher at the high school effective June 2, 2023.
Aho.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item K is a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement from Paul Clagio, elementary teacher at Lincoln Elementary effective June 3, 2023.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is where I normally vote Noah on her retirement, but I can advise not to. But I've known Paul Clagio for over 30 years and he truly is a loss this year. He jumped in teachers like Paul Clagio every game. Truly. One of those kids that I watched him from time to time, he's a teacher tomorrow and it's amazing how he comes and protected. My grandkids still talk about him. He's one of the best teachers I've ever had. I just want to go on the record with that.
Well, thank you for that and we'll make sure that letter goes out with thanking and everything you did. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item L is a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement from Lisa Perola, elementary teacher at Lincoln Elementary effective January 3, 2024.
Aho. Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item A. Item A, directors, any?
Chair, I just have one comment and primarily for the general public and appearance. The Boys and Girls Club had their grant opening on the 31st and there's currently 83 members. They're opening up enrollment. So there should be information going out on Parents Square. So just wanted to get that out there so people sign up to get at least, there's going to at least be 100 members accepted and then we'll see beyond that.
Was there a good turnout?
Yeah, it was a very nice turnout at the open house. Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else? Student director, Iggen?
I'm going to have to stay. One thing I'm going to add is Jack Jamboree was a blast last week. Even though Friday, we didn't have the, we didn't get to see everything in the classroom, but I think it counts a point to this Friday. And it was a great idea for the, what did you call it today?
The Jacket Jamboree Scramble.
The scramble, yeah.
So tomorrow they can dress up again in pajamas or...
Flannel.
Flannel.
Yep, flannel.
It was pink out jersey and Campbell Day.
Flannel.
It doesn't even rhyme. And then Spirit Day on Friday.
I know a lot of kids are happy about that and it's the whole best outfit, prize or whatever, whatever it is.
Yeah, there'll be prizes for the best outfit tomorrow.
Yep.
And then we'll do all the coronation of that best on Friday.
And it's Campbell Day tomorrow?
Or pajama or pink out.
Oh, oh, any of them.
Or Jersey day.
Basically wear whatever you want.
So all the last week dressed up days?
Yeah.
We're just going to do tomorrow. You can wear anything from last week tomorrow.
Okay.
And the best outfit gets a prize.
Gets a prize, okay.
Yeah.
Nice.
That's it for me. That's all I got.
And it's registration, right?
No.
You should say about who's going to state in skiing.
Oh, yeah. Adam's going to state in skiing, which is...
Adam Holt.
Ben Holt.
Yep.
Yep.
I got that in my notes.
Oh, you do? All right.
Getting ahead of ourselves. Thank you.
Yep.
Give your report. Item B, principal's assistant principal. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Nice to have you here like that.
Thank you. Take my shirt too.
Yeah.
Can you face the camera a little bit if you would?
Sure, yeah.
Thanks, Derek.
Not a problem. Chair, members of the board, thank you guys for having me. Good to see everybody. It's been a while. Just a couple of updates for you on what we have going on in the buildings in your own department. This year, our LTFM and Capitol projects are planned and scheduled for summer already. Several of the bigger ones that we're going to be doing are, one of them is the last large roof section at the Lincoln that's out of warranty. That one covers basically the library and then runs the whole center corridor of that building, of the ground floor. That project's been bid and we're hopefully going to award it at the next meeting. Also along with that, we did an alternate one and alternate two. Alternate one was for the high school pool, the 91 edition there, redoing that section. And then alternate two was to replace the section over the gym, which again is already, weirdly enough, 30 years old. So I'm going to wait and see where the numbers come back on those and make a plan and go from there. Also, next year, 2024 marks the 100th year anniversary of the high school being complete. Students, students in it already 100 years ago, which is crazy to think about. With that, we're going to, you know, prior to that celebration that they're going to have next year, we're going to pressure wash the entire exterior of the building. All the brick, all the white stone, clean up the, clean the brick up, remove all the mildew off the white stone. Any kind of tuck pointing, crack repair, patching that we need to do, just to make sure we don't have any water penetrating anywhere. We don't need it to give us problems. Also, we'll be, I'm going to replace the front sidewalks that wrap it on both sides of the building. Currently, they're, they're getting really, really busted up and they're only six feet wide. So I'd like to widen them to eight feet and replace them. That'd be a really nice upgrade. And then just some, some simple landscaping out front. I don't know if anyone's noticed, but one side of the building doesn't have any shrubs in front of it and the other side is loaded with them. So just nothing, nothing crazy, but just balance it out, even everything up a little bit, make it look nice. And then possibly in a year or two, talk about that, that sign in the front. I know it was a hot topic about six, eight years ago. So hopefully we could find some dollars and make that happen again. That project's set to be bid out in the beginning of March and then awarded shortly after. So hopefully by the second meeting in March, we can award that as well.
Which project?
For the high school.
The sign or the whole thing?
The whole thing. The sign is something we're not going to do this coming year. It's something I would like to see happen in the next couple, two, three, four years, you know?
Yeah.
Just it's expensive, so get it on the radar now and we can plan for it and make it happen.
Yeah.
When was the last time the light pole was repainted?
2018 it was repainted.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Yep. We had a crew come up from Ohio and he shimmyed himself all the way up there and painted it on the way down. So, yeah, it was quite the thing to see. Yeah, those are a couple of the bigger items that we're going to be working on in the summer as far as bidding and contracts. Some of the other things, I'm going to do some cafeteria, I'm going to do the cafeteria floor at the Green Haven, replace that, replace some classroom floors up there as well. Lincoln pool and locker room repairs, since we're using that pool now in those locker rooms and pool can use some updates. And some tennis court patching, repairing over there at the Lincoln as well. That court's in rough shape. It's something I'd like to see us maybe get through another two, three years. And then talk about having that all re, completely resurfaced, milled up and redone. So again, that's almost 30 years old as well. So we're coming to be on some of those bigger items like that. Yeah, otherwise that's, those are some of the bigger items.
What about the field and is everything totally done now?
Yep, yep, yep. We're done out there, ready for, ready for all the spring sports, track.
You talked about the concession and...
Yep, yep. We're still, yep, we're waiting to see how much money we're going to have left over out of that fund before we make any decisions on that. But yeah, that's, that's in the plans as well. Just upgrading, upgrading the bathrooms, the lighting fixtures.
This spring or summer or when is that?
It'll be in the summer. It'll be in the summer, yeah, after the spring sports are done. Yeah, the list is never ending, but chip away at it.
Will this be the first season for track now to use all the new stuff?
Yep, yep. Yeah, so they should be all set and excited for it is what I hear. So see what happens. We got a new football coach now. Get some wins there as well and go from there.
Is there any more discussion than, than maybe this would be for our athletic director? We have to have a separate building for softball, separate building for track, or are we going to try to combine it? Is football going to take over the existing building? Is there any talk about how we're going to manage having all those teams out by the...
No, we really haven't yet. I know football's kind of, they're, they're separate. They're in the fall, you know? So spring can, or excuse me, track and field can have it all spring. I'm assuming soccer, I don't know how that's going to work. It's something that we'll, we've, we've talked a little bit about, but...
What about soc, did you say softball?
Well, I know there's been some discussion. I don't know if I can bring it, well, I can talk about it at this meeting. That's what it's all about. Bringing the different clubs together and try to see if we can fundraise money to build a separate facility for, you can't have the girls in the boys locker room. So they need the soccer. Soccer and softball would need a separate locker room. And then football would have their locker. And then track, boys track, girls track. So it's just a matter of logistic, how you're going to do it.
How you're going to do it, yeah.
If we can do it.
Yeah, that's something we have to look into. We'll definitely look into it.
So for right now, so softball will dress right on site, here in the building and then go out to the field. And track and field typically doesn't use the locker room unless it's raining or in climate weather, then they go in there and use it. But yeah, so that is on the radar to figure out how we're going to be able to utilize this locker room space.
And then what about, I thought we were able to play soccer on that new field.
Yep.
Does that have to be lined different?
No, the lines are out there.
Oh, they're all, okay.
So if you look at the field, the field is lined for soccer, football and softball.
Oh, it is already? That's done. Okay. So are we going to be playing our soccer games out there starting in the fall?
Yep, so we'll, we'll play some soccer games there and some still at Vic Powler. So, and the same with softball. When I met with the softball coach, yep, early in the year, we want to play out there, but then as the weather gets better, want to be back on grass. Because that's where you're going to play all your playoff games. Your state games will still be on grass. So...
Can you imagine Tyler, like longer term, the tennis courts resurfacing them? Is that a financially very expensive project?
To resurface them?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not very bad. When you have to, like what needs to happen with this one in maybe, like I said, five, six years, it'll have to be completely ground up, milled up and new blacked out down and basically start over?
So I'm just throwing this out there. Maybe you've thought about it, but if we're going to start over, is that the place we want to start over? Would we want to start over across the highway with our other athletic?
It's a great question, you know? When the time comes, yeah, let's sit down and have that conversation. Absolutely.
Because we'd also talked about having a practice baseball field turf out there. And that was part of the, just one of the designs. Remember Mike?
Yep.
Yeah. And the other thing is I happened to go over to Grand Rapids for a meeting last week. And boy, they have a pretty nifty setup with a sheet of ice with a roof over it and it's outside. And I just think, hmm, like, I don't know, maybe for tennis it would have to be higher or something, but since we don't have indoor tennis or an indoor field house. It's awesome. And I think we just need to come up with a plan before we just start.
Yeah, and again, like I said, I mean, it's, yeah, by any means, we're not going to go tomorrow and get this project in the works. I mean, it's something like that where, yeah, let's, we got all this space. We have all these ideas. Take some time, just like we did at Achiever. We'll put some serious thought into it and do what's, what would fit us the best.
Then we need to get the highway walk over.
There you go. You've been trying.
That's my dream.
Do you have anything to do with the baseball field, with the Allen Nyberg field?
No, I do not. That's all, that's all the city giving perks are.
I was just not in that.
Scoreboard we do, but that's about it.
And is the land where our tennis courts are, does that belong to the city?
No, that's ours.
It's ours?
Yep. Yep, all the way from there, what is that, 24th, 25th? Yeah, all the way to there, to the Fire Hall Road, to Dillon Drive, whatever it's called.
Brooklyn.
Brooklyn Drive, excuse me, yeah. Yep, that's all ours. Otherwise, any other questions or concerns, you know how to get ahold of me.
And I was just going to say, I think most of these buildings relatively recently, and they look amazing.
Yeah.
Every one of them.
That's your custodial staff, are you? Absolutely.
Who are doing a great job.
Yeah. They deserve, they deserve a lot of credit for that stuff, for sure.
And the students too, for helping to just, you know, respect their school and what they do.
Yeah, that goes a long way.
Yes, it does. So...
Thank you. Give your report.
Oh, you're not speaking tonight?
No.
Hey. So you already hit me with a few questions, but I was just going to update you quick on just the winter season. Our girls hockey just finished up yesterday at Moose Lake and unfortunately lost 4-0 in the first round of the playoffs. We just, yesterday also, we hosted the Section 7A Alpine Ski where we had Adam Venipole qualify for state. And then also Hilda, I'm going to butcher her last name. Say that.
Nucky.
Yeah, and she missed going to state by one place. Which it's okay. She's a junior, so she'll be back. She'll have an opportunity to come back and compete next year. One act played, did a great job, ended up third in our sectional, missed it by one place going to state. But if you didn't have the opportunity to see it, they did a great job. We had opportunity to watch them during the school day and then that Friday evening. Some of the things that are coming up, we'll be hosting section, it's 6A for wrestling. We'll be hosting that next Thursday here in the high school. Boys swim section will be the 24th and 26th of February. We'll be hosting that in the high school. And then also we'll be hosting 7A girls basketball in the Memorial Building starting in March. So those are some of the things that we got going on right now. Our boys hockey is still competing. They'll finish up next Tuesday. And it looks like right now, if everything stays the way it is, they'll be the number two seed and will get a home playoff game. Boys and girls basketball are in full swing and they'll be finishing up. Girls will finish up here late February and start their playoffs early March. And then the boys will start the second week of March. So for playoffs. Fundraising wise, oh, the Alpine Ski, I was going to tell you the numbers. We had over 262 athletes out there yesterday competing, so...
In skiing?
Yeah, so that was all of the different schools that came in, so males and females, not just from our high school.
I was going to say what?
No, that was all the teams. So that was with all the teams combined, male and female. Fundraising, we're just finishing up if you saw some of the different signs with the gas pump that we have out at Walmart. That will be closed down here at the end of February and then we'll get those proceeds from that. We also have pasta. We did it in the winter and we're doing, we're carrying it through spring. So you can get some pasta for Easter, St. Patty's Day, order that for some friends and family. And then all of that money is going towards our student athletes to help them either compete or help them if they can't pay for some of their fees. So other than that, that's about it. Winter has been really, really busy. So looking to slow down here the middle of March a little bit and then ramp back up for spring sports. Hit me with any questions you may have.
What's the pasta fundraiser? Is that like a meal, a Valentines or something?
No, it's just a, it's a company that's online that's based out of Tennessee. And we've just been sending it out on social media.
Oh, okay.
And then also throughout the school on our...
So you just ordered the dry pasta online and the school benefits?
Yeah, yeah. So again, it all, we just, once we close down the site, then they write us a check and it comes back to us, ISD 701.
Do we have any representative on the seven, Section 7 conference people, like the board?
No board, no.
We have no one?
So we have, so what do you mean representative? We're a representative, when I go to the meetings, I'm a representative, but I don't get, I'm not a voting member.
Well, I guess the deciders of who gets the playoff, the playoff locations for all the sports.
That's the, that's the section secretary, which for 7A is Chad Stoskov. And then Section 7, 2A is Tom Lennarz. So when they come up for bid or when they're free, then we can choose. Like we're doing a ton of them this year. So we did section cross-country was held here for boys and girls. And now we did have some section volleyball here. We had the first two rounds here. And now in the winter, we're doing...
Well, we're doing the 7A basketball, right, at the Memorial Building?
7A basketball, we're doing swimming and diving for the boys. And actually, I'm sorry, we did swimming and diving for the girls too. So we're hosting a ton of them.
So we host a lot of it, but I guess my concern is that they take all the time and work to put that basketball floor into the Memorial Building? And we're just going to do the 7A girls? I mean, it'd be nice if we could do more than that on that. I mean, since they go to the effort of putting the floor in.
But again, it's...
Well, who decides? Not just these couple people are deciding?
Yeah, pretty much it's the secretary and then it's the ADs.
The ADs?
Yeah.
So do they get a vote, the ADs?
Yes and no.
I said no.
You can voice your opinion.
Oh, but you don't actually vote on it?
No.
So the head person is the decider. Because, yeah.
And they, they try to make it where it's centrally located. And it, it makes sense for us to get the 7A.
Yeah.
But then when you start talking about 72A, it's a little bit further south. So I can see the, why they would want to stay in the Duluth area or further south.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Yeah, I know sometimes it seems to end up in Duluth when it just as easily and conveniently could be in Hibbing. That was my sense of it.
Yeah, but we're working on that. So I do speak up. So when we're at those meetings. Sometimes when I, after we're hosting all these section things, I probably should have kept my mouth shut.
Oh, no, 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 no. The squeaky wheel gets the grease, right?
It's a word.
We're hosting the music one too.
Yes.
What?
We're hosting the music section one too.
And you're on the board.
You're on the board for that? That's seven, yeah.
For this year? For this basketball?
And actually Renee Secora, Ms. Secora is on the 72A. She took Mr. Finkel's spot. That's true. I forgot about that.
When hosting all these, do you mainly depend on parents of the athletes to help support them?
A lot of our regular game day workers, so like for the basketball one, we're going to be hiring folks that have worked for girls basketball and boys basketball. Because they, they're familiar with doing the ticket sales, because you have to keep track of everything and be accountable for the money. And then if you've worked a table, like Bob has worked a table, Mr. Secora has worked, so just mainly those folks.
That's great, because that's a lot of work.
Yes, it is a lot of work. And then concession wise, we're fortunate when we have something in our buildings here that the clubs get it, you know? But when we go to the Memorial Building, that's Mr. Sullivan's gets all of that proceeds for us.
Sullivan's room?
Because they have a contract with...
Oh, I didn't know that.
With the Memorial Building. So we don't get those.
Do we know is our student band going to be one of those?
Our student band will be, so I know Mr. Berg is working. They'll, they'll be like our boys hockey sectional and then as our girls go, girls and boys go in the playoffs, then they pick and choose those. So where they can go. Because again, it's a big commitment for our students in the band too, to try to make all of those, if we have like three games in the... then they pick and choose those, so where they can go, 'cause, again, it's a big commitment for our students in the band, too, to try to make all of those, if we have like three games in a week, and for them to, to give up working outside and doing some of the other stuffs that they do.
And even the choir, I know they came, um, and did the National Anthem.
Yeah, the choir did.
And it was really nice to have that live, so they did a really nice job, so those, that, those are nice things to add.
Yeah, no, and they asked me not to sing, so everybody was there, so. No, that is, and then, our, our students get out and they do a lot of things, and they're pulled in a lot of different directions, so. It is nice to be able to have them at a, a lot of the functions that we have, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't on the list, but could I just say a few things, because having you in here reminds me of some stuff going on?
Of course.
Okay.
You just do it.
On Monday night, we had a talent show, and we had about ten or eleven acts, it was wonderful, and actually, the winner, um, Maya Petrowski is going to sing at the Coronation tomorrow, so all, everyone will get to see, she wrote an original song and sang it and played the guitar, so, if you can come to Coronation on Friday morning at eight o'clock, you'll be able to see that, too.
Eight.
Mm-hmm, eight to nine.
Are you kidding?
The kids do it, they have it.
What happened to two o'clock?
Well, that's the pep fest, you can come to the pep fest at two and see all the games and shenanigans there. Um, I just wanted to remind, we have the, our World's Best Workforce meeting in here at three o'clock on Monday, and I know Sarah and Kami are part of that, too, so, um, that will be good to keep working on that plan.
Renee, is it here or is it virtual?
No, it's here in the border.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, um, last time we talked about, um, there were questions about first aid and CPR, so Mr. Turner worked on, on getting, um, that training. So we had the first one last night, and there were four people that came to that, and then we're gonna work on another training, um, so more people can attend. Um, so that is in the works, and then.
Thank you.
It is registration week, and I wanted to highlight all of the college and the schools classes, and help me if I forget any. Um, new this year, or for next year, Intro to Teaching will be offered as a college and a school, and that will go with the Career Pathways for Education. Band and choir have both added a SITS component for second semester next year, so that will be for art and also the, the, um, the Theater and Communications pathway. Calculus has added Calculus, too, so now kids can get ten credits of college in Calculus. Um, we'll have the CNA starting up again, we didn't, we weren't able to do that this year, but next year, we're gonna partner with Chisholm. They have four kids that registered, they'll come over here, and we'll work on getting an instructor that's an RN along with Jeremy Plumbing, so that's exciting. Medical Terminology, Anatomy and Physiology, Trigonometry, American Lit, British Lit, Composition One and Two, College Algebra, American History One and Two, Physics, and Chemistry are all college and the schools classes, so, um, kids can't earn an A.A. because we have four different colleges that are doing this, and you know, they each want to have the A.A., but it'll all be theirs, and so, we don't have a sponsor for an A.A., but those credits can transfer, depending on where they're gonna go. So it's still a really good thing for the kids to do. Um, for example, the SITS Physics is through University of Minnesota Duluth, so they get those credits. Um, and then, I think, that's it for all the, those SITS courses, and thank you for providing the health, because that's gonna be new next year, to have all ninth graders take a health class as well. So, that is what I have, any questions about the high school?
Are you doing the woods classes an art credit, too, now?
Yes, that's new, too, so if you have, if you are in the Advanced Welding or Advanced Woodworking, so you've taken at least three classes of each of those, you can get an art credit. And that's, um, that's been designated by MDE through CTE designated courses, so that's a good thing for kids as well.
Three of those courses gives you one full-year credit?
No.
College credit?
The actual art credit would be in the advanced class, but to get to the advanced class, you have to take the, yeah.
To get, or.
So by the time you senior year, you should be able to just get that art credit, 'cause they'll be in the advanced, if you go nine, ten, eleven.
Did I miss anything, James?
If you can get those classes.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can, actually, if you can get those classes, yeah.
Not that.
You have that discussion.
Thank you.
Yes.
With that, we'll go to Item C, ready your report? Anything? Nothing here, we'll go to Item Eight, Administrative Business, Sir Alex, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Item A is a motion to provide the school's agenda back up to the public by having it available on our school district website and onboard.
Chair, also move.
Oh, uh.
To move this boarded, any discussion? Hearing none, excuse me, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Item B is a motion to approve the resolution for the school district official newspapers, one, the Misavie Tribune, will be designated to publish the proceedings of the minutes of the school board and legal notices, and two, the Misavie Tribune and Hometown Focus will be designated to publish display advertising at the legal rate.
Hold on.
Support.
Move by Director Polter, supported by Director Ebert. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair, I just wanna thank Marie Tolanen from the Misavie Tribune for attending our meeting, and for the last couple of articles that she's done, so, it's very nice to have you, welcome. Yes, thank you.
Yep, that was a breath of fresh air, seeing that, uh, thanks, be happy to do it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carried, thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve the high school band trip to Disney World, March twenty-fourth through thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
To move, support. Move by Director Egan, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? You're looking for volunteers?
There, what'd you say, oh, if you're looking?
Cheffers. Okay, all in favor, including volunteers, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carried, thank you.
Item D is an appointment by the chair of two directors to sign and distribute two thousand twenty-three high school diplomas.
This year, we're gonna have Kim and Kathy do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I.
You're welcome.
Mr. Egan, hold on.
It's gonna be my last year, so if it's all right, I'd like to.
No, go ahead, you can have my spot.
Thank you.
Sounds good. As it will be.
You sure?
Yes. Next, you're on. Mine, too. So, but we don't give a motion for that, but that's okay, it'll be Director Kim and Director Mike.
Okay. Item E is a motion to approve policy number seven thirteen, bus accidents.
So moved, support.
Move by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same side, excuse me, motion carried.
Item F is a motion to approve policy number seven fourteen, funded balances.
So moved.
Move by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Ebert, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carried, thank you.
Item G is a motion to approve policy number seven fifteen, student activity accounting.
So moved.
Support.
Move by Director Ebert, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carried, thank you.
Item H is a motion to approve policy number seven seventeen, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources.
So moved.
Move by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Egan, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carried, thank you. We have nine discussion items.
I have one.
I have one, too.
Director Ebert?
Uh, I just thought maybe we could revisit the time of our meetings. Um, I, I mean, after Sarah set up the, after Director Ebert set up the last meeting, four-thirty didn't work for working people, then why are we meeting at four-thirty? I mean, to me, I'd rather have contact with Trina in the office when I get here, to tie up loose ends, and, you know, do business, and I, I like having her here when I get here. I don't know how everyone else feels, and then after you said that, I thought, well, then what are we doing at four-thirty, if that really doesn't meet your goals? I, I'd like to go back, but.
Going back, really wouldn't be meeting that goal either, what's nice is that since we've moved it, you've been able to attend, so that's been great.
Who's been able to?
Oh.
I mean, I can attend then now that skiing is over, so I mean, to me, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, um, I just feel like we have more administrators that would come after school, you know, and maybe at four-thirty, it's a lot harder for a principal or an administrator to stay till four-thirty and then come to our meeting, or go home and then come back, or, I, I just don't think we're gonna have any more people, now, today, we do have quite a few, actually.
If I can just add that, I mean, when there's a time you would have each department would come.
Yeah.
The students would get a presentation of what was going on in each individual area of the school, and that's another, another thing, and, and we're not getting that right now, and I'd really like to see that re-implemented.
Oh, me, too, yeah.
Kids come and talk.
Yeah.
And, and having our teachers here is great, visiting our teachers.
Yeah.
I don't want interrupting them in class, or interrupting a lunch, it's always up to these, with our staff one-on-one.
It would be nice, and a teacher is done at what time, three o'clock? For them to wait till four-thirty is, I, I would think we'd get, we'd have better chance of having a teacher here.
You wanna go to three, or three-thirty, or?
We also still have a better chance of community members and parents attending if you moved it after working hours.
But, working, what are working hours, okay, you're saying nine to five, or eight to five, whatever, right?
I would think anything after five o'clock.
Well, a lot of people work till three, if they work day shifts at the mines, or maybe they work shift work, and they work three to eleven, so I'm not sure how many more people we have if we had it at five or six, I don't know.
I think three o'clock's too early.
I think three is too.
About three-thirty.
We've only had this meeting twice, at four-thirty, and we've had people attend at both times, so I'm not really sure where the concern is.
So, Chair, and the other thing is, I think, we haven't really had any pressing topics on our agenda in the last couple of meetings, so, there may not be a reason that people would want to be here, but if there is something that's, uh, more, I don't know, it's very controversial. A hotter topic, it would give maybe more people a chance, I think.
Maybe, what?
Well, we could, if something like that were to happen, we could schedule a special meeting, change time, or something like that, if we knew, weren't up in advance.
I think it's hard to pick what's considered a hot, or.
Right.
I, I think we just need to, it's been three-thirty for, pretty much since I've been, at least ten years, and that, to me, that's, that's most convenient for me personally. Um, and I, like I said, no, I enjoy meeting up with our staff, they've got a lot that we need to hear.
They have years to come and do that, and they have, they don't attend.
Yes, they have.
I've attended the last two years, and I saw very few staff members come and attend here, and we're not even giving the rest of our community the opportunity to come, we're not even giving them that opportunity.
Yeah, but the eight years before you were watching, staff were here all the time, I thought.
They come and go in a week.
Yeah, they'd come and go, yeah.
My understanding is that the, the staff is represented by individuals that are picked by the individual groups to attend these meetings, so it's not like we're inviting all our staff to come here, it's just the ones that.
It's like a rotation.
Department heads.
It's our superintendent that picks the rotation.
It's hard, that goes, yeah. I'm talking about staff that might just stop in, just, oh, I'm gonna go to a meeting this month.
Mostly the board members still like three-thirty, right?
I think community members, if there's a topic that's a hot topic, they're gonna get here no matter what it is.
Or they, or they.
Uh, they come, if it's a hot topic, they come, we've seen that, as we know.
But we don't want them just to come when it's a hot topic, we just, we should just want them to come to get more involved.
Well, I do, but they don't, but they really don't come.
But this is a board meeting, it's for us people right here, and it's up to us whatever time we wanna meet, that's all.
Well, anyways, I just wanted to bring that up, we can't vote on your changes right now, anyway, so.
We'll put it on the agenda for next meeting, you still want four-thirty?
I'd still like to keep it at four-thirty.
Okay, we'll try that, we'll, we'll, we're two options, three-thirty or four-thirty, and we'll take a board next week, gives us two weeks to think about it, so, you got that? Yes, sir, thank you. Anything else, or any way?
I have one item.
Oh, go ahead.
It's a personal note, and this goes out to Mr. Anderson, welcome, uh, you have a struck, a tough schedule and a tough challenge ahead of you. Um, I know you applied before, and I hope that this will turn the program around, and I hope that you'll get the support from this board, the students, and the staff. 'Cause I've always said that you have a successful football program, you have a successful year, it kinda starts a year out for, for the classes, so, um, I'm hoping that you'll get the support from our athletic director and the students, and I hope that anything that we can do, I can do, anybody can do to help make program better, and, uh, more enjoyable at large, uh, we wish you the best, I wish you the best of luck.
Welcome aboard.
Yes.
And good luck. Director Polter?
I've got one question, I'm sorry, um, do we know how many student teachers we have right now in our district that next year will be completed? I'm just thinking, you know, with some of these teachers retiring, is there any of those student teachers right now that we have, maybe looking to come in our district and there, do they, does anybody know that?
I don't know, I've talked to a, a couple, I got, they both said that they would work here, so.
They're just invited to apply, right, the posting is done.
Yeah.
You gotta get a little prodding push once in a while, then, yeah, it's good, too.
We never seem to have trouble getting, you know, kids for our teaching roles.
Yeah, just to follow up real quick, no, I went to the chamber meet, or dinner Friday night, and up to me, sitting next to a couple of just booter, she's a teacher in Greenway, and he owns, they own a couple of rental, uh, facilities in Hibbing, but, talking to her, she goes, I wish I could come to Hibbing, because she says, you guys have the best staff, and you're probably the best paid. And, uh, so there is enough interest out there, and my response to her was, apply, you know, just apply, put an application, so.
We have two elementary retirements, right?
Yeah, at least, at least two, yeah.
I would think, we, I think we're taking, we've recruited many teachers over the years, from Slough to Des Moines.
Oh, no, we don't have to recruit, they come.
Right, but it's common practice.
Although, I think that Superintendent Aldrich, well, Alex can help us with this, is, um, with managing our budget, we don't know if we're gonna be filling all the retirement positions.
Decisions haven't been made on that yet, we're waiting until the deadline comes for people to submit their retirements, and we can look at the whole picture and decide where we need to fill and where we don't.
What's the deadline again?
Uh, it's, I think it's March first.
Is that?
Could be wrong, but it's coming up here soon.
Okay, and it, and I think before we, um, adjourn, James has been sitting back there so quietly, that I don't think it would be right if we didn't pick on James, so, what's the track season looking like?
We're hoping, we're hoping Mr. Turner's got the schedule set up, and, uh, Mr. Glass got that facility ready for us, so.
No, we're a little bit forward to it, but. Good.
I didn't know I was gonna get called on, so. I'm a little disappointed, Mr. Egan, in say, if the two-time defending section champion girls cross-country program can't set the tone for the building, I don't know what else can, but, shoot.
You also know the best, maybe the stuff for it, so, that's, you know.
That's our.
Maybe best of all, yeah.
And Mr. Please still has glitter coming out of everywhere, because.
I saw that.
Of the key club teacher torture change week war winner.
Yeah.
Than he was.
Grand prize, yes.
Mr. Please, you wanna be careful, 'cause Mr. Anderson could also recruit a few of those girls.
Yeah.
Oh, and I have to commend, I have to commend Mr. Please, I said, I, I'm creating some friendly competition, basketball game announcing. I said to the boys' basketball game announcer that they really have to kinda step it up a little bit, because the girls announcer really creates a lot of thrill and excitement at those games.
I did not hear that yet.
Oh, yes, I, I was, uh, it is true, so I was kinda hassling him a little bit, yeah, so thank you for doing that.
Yes, yeah.
It really does make a game.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Before you adjourn, uh, we are excited to have Coach Anderson, be our next football coach, he came in with, uh, a plan and a vision, and I truly believe that, uh, he's gonna have our program where it needs to be in the next couple of years, so.
Very good.
Motion to adjourn.
Without objection, the meeting is adjourned at five eighteen, and thank everybody for coming here, and your participation.